All right, I call the order of the Litchfield Park Planning and Zoning Commission. And if everyone will join me in the closing of the meeting. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Item number three is called the community. I don't think we have any requests on the community or none. We'll move on to the first order of business. Daniel, did you have anything you wanted to say on that?
No, Chair, I'll just turn it over to you.
Okay. Well, for those that haven't been through this, our zoning code, and the zoning code, unlike all the other boards and commissions, says that the chairman and the vice chairman are term limited after two terms. So, I, and my term limited only is to their office, not as a member of the board. So, in the past, there have been different things that have come up, you know, where the vice chairperson traded basically with the chair, and then you go, probably here is that it. Or occasionally, if that wasn't available, then there might be one from whatever. So, what I'm gonna do, to start the ball rolling, is I'm gonna, at this point, and you're not bound by this, but I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint Mike Faye to serve as the chairman of planning, planning and zoning. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now, before we go forward, are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of Mike Faye being the chairman of the, the chair, now I can't get used to calling people a chair, but anyway.
I'm happy to do it.
Okay. So, you're now officially, officially in. So, do you want me to do the next item, or do you want?
I can take it. We'll just turn past the baton.
Okay, there you go.
All right, the second item of business here is the election of vice chair. I guess following Dave's lead, I will go ahead and make a motion, and I'll motion that Dave be the vice chair. Is anybody else, you can either second that, or is there anybody else that is interested in being vice chair?
I think we need to second that motion before...
Oh, did you?
Or, did you make a motion, or?
You made a motion, there hasn't been a second.
Okay, it needs to be a second, I think, before.
Sure. Does anybody, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Oh, is there?
I'd like to see it open to other candidates as well, if that's okay.
Does anybody have a desire, or does make a nomination for anybody else?
Do we need to vote on the first motion? Or just?
We can please.
I'd like to see, make a motion, may not be appropriate to add a motion on top of a motion, but I'd like to see Vicki Lynn Helly as a vice chair, and start getting some new blood here, and get people really familiar with the council and proceedings and the other commissions. I think it'd be good to have a little more integration.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion? Okay, he's shaking his head, no.
I think Bob just seconded it.
Okay. Bob seconded it. Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. I think the easiest thing to do is let's go with the first motion first, which is the vice chair position. So, all those in favor of appointing me to be the vice chairman, please say aye and raise your hand, Bob.
Aye.
Okay. So, then there, are there, I assume there are two noes, that would be Bob and Commissioner Lawrence. Okay. So, I'm elected with two, two negative votes. Okay. With that...
Turn it over to me.
Sorry, I kinda took over.
That was fine. That was not a problem. Thank you for that. Item C under business is the approval of minutes.
Wait, I'm sorry, actually, can I say something before we go on to that?
Go ahead.
I get your point of this, like, we kinda come into this meeting, and it's awkward, I think, for everybody. Is there a way that we could do this next time, where people can put in, if they have interest in one of these roles, before we come to this meeting? Is that procedurally?
Yeah, it's procedurally, it's possible, because this commission, it's, you know, it's our election, if you will. I've seen it done, you can do that, where you actually can take applications and go through a whole big process. So, that, in the future, can certainly be done. I've also seen, if, if, try to, there's no way to not make it awkward, because we're a small group, so. The other way that could be done, if you really wanted to open it up, would be to, once you have, you know, motions and seconds in place, would be to have a secret ballot. The problem is, it really isn't secret. It's only secret for the moment, and it becomes a public record immediately thereafter, so it's kind of a pointless thing to do that, but some people are not comfortable. But we can certainly, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, I guess I would, for the record, I would ask staff, the month before our next, I guess in two years, we put an email out to the group, asking for people that are interested in it. And, you know, that way we can, and make that, you know, that we all know who's interested, so we can talk to them about it, prior to the meeting. Because I think everybody's fully qualified here to do it.
As is Bob, and just to take on to that comment, I think that it'd be good to have some, you know, you both have done a fine job, and no criticism at all, but it would be nice to have some of the newer members of the commission have an opportunity to move up into a little bit more of a leadership position. And I think that they've committed a lot of time and energy to get to know this, and I think it's part of getting the bigger picture, too, of how things work in the city, so.
Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll move on to item C, approval of minutes. Daniel, I have you as the presenter, do you have anything, or should I just call it fraction? Okay. All those in favor, or do I have a motion for?
I move that we approve the minutes of the...
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, move forward to the next item. D, public hearing, use permit for Monument Point Business Park. Presenter, John Flue.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. Congratulations on your new positions, and welcome back, we haven't seen you since May. So, I'm gonna try a screen share. So, we have one public hearing item tonight. We have a use permit over in the Monument Point Business Park. So, we have one applicant tonight, it's Coal Creek Consulting, they're here tonight to represent the project. They represent T-Mobile, who would like to do a, they've asked for a use permit. I'm gonna see if I can move, move that box out of the way. Was that a free note? Yeah, thank you. Couldn't tell if I was moving it or if you were. So, Coal Creek and T-Mobile are requesting a use permit for wireless communication facility, identified in our zoning code as a WCF. And, the site is located south, southwest corner of Camelback Road and El Mirage Road. Again, Monument Point Business Park, this is one of the few areas that's owned industrial or the I District. You might remember, we had a text amendment to the zoning code that we had been working on last year, and then this year, where we came before P&amp;Z and asked you to allow, consider to allowing wireless communication facilities in the I District. The planning and zoning commission had recommended approval of that, and we took that to council this spring, back in March and April. So, at the April 19th meeting, council adopted the text amendment. It was very simple ordinance amendment, where we were basically adding... I don't know why this won't allow me, maybe you need to do it like this. Strange, it's not love to use a point of... Basically, it's adding wireless communication facilities in industrial. Specific to the T-Mobile request, the applicant requested a 65-foot monopole disguised as a, what's known as a mono elm, or an eldentree. We have some exhibits for you to take a look at at the moment. Typical of a wireless facility, there's ground mounted mechanical equipment, switches, power, et cetera, that are located usually in a, some kind of a enclosed compound for security reasons. And so, that's part of the proposal. And then, if constructed, the wireless communication facility would improve wireless service for this part of the city, and there are other parts of the site where they're located in Maricopa County, so hence the need for the wireless facility. Couple of maps, so, the red arrow is the site specific in Monument Point. So, it's just off of El Mirage Road, Camelback Road to the north, there's a large sand and gravel operation on the east side of El Mirage Road, and this is right on the edge of our city limits in Litchfield Park. Aerial photo, just for context purposes, there's a Burger King right on the corner of Camelback, and El Mirage, west of that is a automotive facility, Christian Brothers, and then just to the north is a self-storage facility, and then the industrial site is where the red arrow is. This is a site plan, you can see the building, the self-storage building, just for context purposes, and then the actual wireless facility is basically, it's a rectangle, a portion of a vacant site, and someday, we hope to see industrial uses on the balance of the property. Typical of a wireless facility, the site would be located somewhere in a corner, so with legal access for the wireless provider. This is a building elevation of what the mono elm would look like. With respect to the staff recommendation, Daniel and I have done a review of the application. We appreciate the applicant's patience while we worked through the text amendment earlier this year, and the staff recommendation is to approve the use permit, subject to two conditions. One, development shall be in substantial conformance with a plan submitted in conjunction with the use permit application, and then number two, the masonry enclosure of the mechanical equipment area shall match the design of the trash enclosure of the adjacent Burger King restaurants. So, we're trying to provide some continuity in Monument Point, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions of Commissioner Lawrence.
Go ahead.
You were first.
Go ahead.
I noticed there weren't any pictures of what it might look like, there was just a sketch, and so, I just went online and found this, which I assume might be what it looks like. So, there is equipment that shows above it, and I was curious what the material is that is, it's made out of, so, I have a couple of extra copies of that.
Chair, Commissioner Lawrence, great question, I'll defer that to the applicant.
Sure.
Commissioner O'Connor. Is this our first one in the city?
Through the Chair, Commissioner O'Connor, this is the first mono elm in the city. Other applications that you might have seen across the Phoenix area are the monopole, the palm trees, the faux palms.
Right.
Mono cactus, which are lower, kind of lower scale, I've seen in the Scottsdale, North Phoenix area, but yeah, this would be the first one in Litchfield Park.
The first of any elevation or anything, right?
I might defer back to Daniel.
To the Chair, Commissioner O'Connor, there is one cell tower located on top, made of top, here in Litchfield Park, that is the only current tower, it is designed like a kong tree.
Gotcha, okay. And then, do, are we required to, like, speak with the, with the adjacent neighbor? And if so, like, was there any, did they have any feedback on it, or?
Again, Chair, through, through the Chair, Commissioner O'Connor, yeah, the typical notification, we didn't feel like this was necessary to have, say, a neighborhood meeting. We did reach out to adjacent property owners and did not receive any feedback from anybody.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to hear, Commissioner O'Connor. We reached out to residents, or property owners within a thousand feet of this location.
Okay.
In contact with residents, and I did not receive any responses, letters, emails, nothing in return.
How many are within a thousand feet?
I believe it was about 40.
Oh, there's that many?
If there wasn't any, the circle doesn't really go past Monument Point on the west side of the boundary lines, it really only the property owners to the south there.
And that's technically county, right? Or is that?
Yes.
Does the city have a limit on the number of nodes allowed on the cell towers? Did we ever discuss that when we were talking about? I don't even know if that's part of zoning or not, or, do you know what I'm even talking about? The nodes are, I guess the nodes are the things that basically kinda send the signal out, and I mean, I guess like Maricopa County, I mean, my gosh, they'll put like 10 of them on a tower, or whatever. And I thought that our city, at one point, was talking about restricting the number, but I don't know if we ever did, and that was sort of brief, anyway.
To the Chair, Commissioner Alvey, I am not sure about that.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lawrence.
Yeah, at one point, under the rational rationale for the tree versus monopole, it referred to as eucalyptus. I assume it's an elm, which I saw in other parts of the presentation.
Chair, Commissioner Lawrence, I have seen a monopole or wireless facility disguised as a eucalyptus tree. There's one in Glendale, on what used to be the Glen Lakes Golf Course.
Okay.
So, it can be done.
But it's not the eucalyptus that they say.
Correct, this would be an elm tree.
It is the elm, okay. And then, also in the application, just two things. One is that it says under 4B, that it does emit odor, dust, gas, whatever, and I think it's intended to say it does not emit that.
Correct.
So, and my last thing is just for the city, just, you know, when someone scribbles a symbol, and it's a name, it would sure be nice under property owner to state, to print out the name of the individual. I think that we've seen that before in some applications, and it is good to have, know who submitted it, or who's the property owner.
Commissioner Frazier.
Is there anything in city code that's requiring them to disguise this? So, I ask, I work for Maricopa Water District, we've recently signed three or four leases with cell tower companies. We've rejected disguise, because these, Monument Point, there's nothing around it. It'd be one thing if this is Flagstaff, and you've got a fir tree, you know, disguised, and it's in the middle of the forest. This is just adding, you know, to me, it, it looks awkward when it just sits there on, there's nothing around it, it's just, it's clearly a cell tower that we put a few things on it to make it kind of not look like a cell tower. You know, so, we've opted, at least in the company that I work for, and I've been part of those discussions, to go with strictly a single monopole cell tower, because in terms of what it does to people's views in the desert, it is less obstruction than adding a bunch of extra stuff to what would otherwise be a pretty narrow pole. So, is that part of code, that we have to disguise it?
Chair, Commissioner Frazier, I think that's a philosophical discussion, so, most of the communities where I've worked in, in the past, I appreciate your experience with the water district, most cities want this type of stealth application. There are other locations across the valley where it would be more like what you described, with just the basic design. We typically, like, if this were on, say, the Wigwam Golf Course, we would want some kind of a disguise, faux, if you will, whether it be like up on Hilltop, I couldn't, I didn't remember that one, I should remember the one that Daniel mentioned, it's in a cluster of palm trees up on the hilltop on Camelback and Litchfield Road, so, this is a requirement in our city.
Okay. So, I mean, for the sake of discussion, if it's on the Wigwam Golf Course, surrounded by tons of mature trees, it makes sense to me. If it's on the, you know, up there with a bunch of palm trees, it makes sense to me. This is gonna be a single pole on Monument Point, of which the tallest building is that self-storage facility, which is two stories, or three?
Three.
So, it's, I mean, that's gonna stick out, and to me, it, I mean, if it's a requirement from the city, but to me, it just, it's going to be a very obvious cell tower that we decided to disguise as a tree.
Do you have questions for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Lawrence.
Just a comment, is, I, I just veered the other way, I think that the city should require trees to be planted around three-story storage units, or Burger Kings, or whatever, there should be an adequate setback, and it should be landscaped for that six-feet-in, or whatever it is, but it does look very, you know, kind of barren there, and, so.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, oh, Commissioner Alvey, go ahead.
I don't know if it's for you, or?
I'd like to add a couple of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Do you mind if we take Commissioner Derry first? Okay. Commissioner Derry, go ahead.
Okay. The first question, is anything else planned for this special development we have there other than what's already there? Is this gonna be the newest item going in? What about the other vacant sites? Is there anything coming up, as it hasn't been officially been declared, but we know is coming?
Go ahead.
To the Chair, Commissioner Derry. Staff has had talks with people, unfortunately, we're still in talks, no one is coming forth with construction documents, or design review, or really any plans.
My next question, in reading the documentation that came with this, I wasn't clear that this is, until I saw this little picture, what the elm was looking like, but if that's definitely what they're using, I like it, because all those ranches have antennae in them, so when they build this up, because up here in Wisconsin where I am, my cousin has a tower on his farm property, and it started out as just a couple little panels, and now they've overloaded with almost 15 panels, and four different vendors are on that single pole. So, as time moves on, I anticipate, so I like what Deb said, that this, and adding more greenery to the whole, that whole park, and as El Mirage Road develops, depending what happens across the street, and the deep pit there, that it may be more aesthetic. And so, I, I mean, we can't get away from this going in, and it's gonna help our reception, so I'm in favor of what's proposed and approved.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
This is a 5G tower, right? Is it 5G, is that what it's intended?
Chair, Commissioner Alvey, let's have the applicant come up, can you talk some of the tech?
Any other questions for staff?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're done with questions for staff, before we can have the applicant come on up and move to the next item. Applicant? You ready? All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Declan Murphy, representing T-Mobile and TowerCon for this project. I've been working on wireless sites in Arizona for about 20-odd years, and it's been a while since I've been in Litchfield Park, I think the last time was doing some antennas on the Wigwam, it's been a while, but we're working on a lot of sites with, I was chatting with Daniel earlier, about the appetite for wireless has never waned here in Arizona, I guess we're, we take for granted all the growth that happens, but I mean, with growth, with people moving, it's data, more demand. And, but I would like to thank Daniel for getting us at this stage, because we did have the amendment to go through, and there was a lot of work on staff's part, I'm sure John was involved, and to get us here, we really appreciate it, because our approach, you know, we're trying to address a gap in T-Mobile service. And as you can appreciate, carriers don't go build cyclones, they really have to. It's, that's part of the business model, if there's calls, if there's complaints, if there's drop-call data, the carrier has to respond, because they get graded on drop-call and network issues as a whole, which is a big deal in the industry. And so, we were looking for a location, and we, you know, because we've always, I've always approached this as a partnership, in terms of, in this for the long haul, we go back to communities, we go back to jurisdictions all the time. And so, it's in our interest to, to not just drop a pin on the map and figure out, let's put a site there, we actually do the diligence, because with a site like this, you're looking for a property owner that will commit to a 20-year lease, and that's not easy, because you're encumbering a property for the long haul. So, we gravitated towards the zoning, we said industrial zoning, we're near homes, but we're far enough away from homes, so, we thought, well, you know, this is great, we have, we talked with a few property owners, actually, but we're in industrial zone, this is where we need to be, it's far enough away from homes, of course, we had to go to the text amendment to make it work, which is fine, but, you know, here we are. But that was, the approach was to actually, you know, try and stay away from homes as far as we can, although nowadays, the demand is coming from homes, because with 5G, and with the technology the way it is now, and I guess it was, you know, accelerated through COVID to a large extent, but people are not getting fixed lines at home, people are relying on wireless data. With 5G now, you'll be able to get up to a gigabyte with your phone, which is really high-speed. The carriers now are selling set-top boxes, so, you know, you can put a set-top box at home, T-Mobile does one for $50 a month on limited data. People aren't getting fixed line costs, you know, essentially going forward, because the technology is gravitating towards wireless, and the carriers are gonna fulfill that need, because it's not only, this 5G advancement opens a whole range of new technology, from monitoring, medical monitoring, you know, all these high-tech medical devices for people to stay at home, to be more reliant at home if you're living at home as an older person, or, you know, to autonomous driving, to, to data protection. So, 5G has opened up this whole new world of technology. And so, with that, you know, each carrier, obviously, really in this market, is trying to keep up with the demand. And so, to the earlier point about notifying neighbors, I mean, I have a number of sites going on in different jurisdictions, from Pinellas County to Flagstaff, to Phoenix, you name it. And it's so interesting, because when we, and we have lots of neighborhood meetings typically, if we're closer to homes, and we're in a residential area, and a lot of the landlords we're dealing with are HOAs nowadays anyhow, so, you know, but it's, it's totally changed, because when we have neighborhood shops now, it's like, when do you wanna build it? Because I need my phone to work, and that's a big change from 10, 15 years ago, would be the total opposite, so. So, anyhow, with that, and, you know, we are in proximity to Maricopa County, but this site in Maricopa County, in an industrial zone, would have been by right at 80 foot without any camouflage. So, if this was in the county, it would have been a by-right 80 foot, go straight to building permit. I'm just saying, because we brought up about the county and proximity, but. And then, to the camouflage, you know, we started out talking about monopole, which would make sense in Litchfield Park. And the problem with that is, there's, there's a couple of problems, actually, from, from an industry perspective, and from a jurisdictional perspective, in that. And I drove from Phoenix, I took the streets coming to Litchfield Park, and I'm driving by monopoles that I know that I was, maybe one or two I was involved with, but that are, you drive by, and now, and you're like, you're almost embarrassed, you know, because what happens over the years is that the UV is very severe on these palm fronds, and there are, you know, a bit of wind, coupled with the UV deterioration, it, they've totally changed in look. And the other thing that has changed a lot is that, with the newer technology, you can see, next to the antennas there, the technology nowadays... you can see next to the antennas there, um, the technology nowadays requires radios to be up close to the antennas. So with the monopole nowadays, you couldn't really hide the radios and the antennas. So this is why we've opted for, we can do an elm, we can do a, a eucalyptus. Doesn't matter to us because we typically work with a company in Tucson called Larson who's been around forever and, uh, they do the best product as far as any type of camouflage for wireless there, they're number one in the country. So, you know, it doesn't matter to us, you know, whether it's an elm or a eucalyptus-looking type tree. But what I will say is that the other advantage of a tree like this is that aesthetically it's going to be better looking than a palm tree. And then it's also capable of accommodating maybe two other carriers. So with this site going in, on, on the retail side of the wireless world, if you like, there's huge competition, but on the infrastructure side, it's in everybody's interest to, uh, to cooperate. Because if we go out looking for a site for T-Mobile, for example, it's a lot easier for us. We would gravitate towards an existing site and co-locate on AT&amp;T or Verizon site. First off, if we can do that, speed to market, cost, you know, makes sense. And so the same is true with this site. If this site gets approved, you know, I'm sure AT&amp;T or Verizon will look at this and, and, you know, it would be easy for them to, to co-locate on a site like this as opposed to even thinking about building new settlements. You see from the aerial, there's lots of rooftops, lots of homes to the west and to the south of the site. So I would imagine the demand is there just based on the rooftops alone and, you know, the, the type of data that's being consumed in, in residential properties now. It's just, you know, everybody has multiple wireless devices, kept a ring doorbell, you know, you name it. It's all technology laden. So, um, with that, so that, that's, that's how we, we arrived with this particular type of site. Because, um, when we were chatting with Daniel earlier on, you know, there was a requirement to stealth the site and the monopole was the initial, um, we, we discussed that initially and then, you know, for the reasons I just explained, I, I explained to staff that this is probably a better option in that it's co-locatable, it's going to hold up better, it's going to conceal the equipment better. Um, we would also propose putting what we call socks on the antennas. So as, as you see at the top of the tree where, um, where the antennas are, we would have essentially a sock that has leaves on it to make it look like the, the branches. So the, the, the stealthing, uh, technology has come a long way since the original monopoles. And, um, so we, we keep on top of that and we're, you know, we don't spend any expense in, in, in any type of, um, stealthing and try to do the right thing. Because again, you know, it's a long-term site, it's going to be there for a long time. Um, I expect that other carriers will want to co-locate on it. So, um, that's, um, not sure if I've leaned anything out, but I would, um, leave it at that and, and address any questions you might have.
Any questions for the applicant? Uh, Commissioner Alvey.
How many nodes are you planning on putting on when it is erected?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Alvey, so I, your question earlier about most municipalities, uh, in fact, all municipalities, because I'm pretty familiar with all the ordinances in Arizona, they encourage co-location. They want you to build a site where multiple carriers will go on and, you know, obviously eliminate, um, the need for other sites. So that's, that's the typical approach and of course, the carriers like that. So if you can build a site in a location where it can serve more than one carrier, it serves everybody's interest, I think. And that seems to be the, the, the way, um, these sites are.
So as many as possible, is that what you wish it?
Yeah, well, um, there's, there's, to get, not to get too technical, but, um, each carrier operates within a certain frequency. So for example, Verizon and, um, oh, sorry, T-Mobile and AT&amp;T were very close in frequency. They can be close enough together. So there's a, there's a, a bottom of antenna to the top of the other antenna, minimum separation that the RF engineer would want to see. So it's typically five to ten feet. Verizon is in a different frequency and they have different requirements. So you, you can physically, the site will be designed structurally to accommodate at least three carriers.
Okay.
And then you kind of, it's up to the carrier to figure out the design so that they don't, they don't interfere with the carrier that's there or they don't have interference from, you know, for their own, um, propagation. So there's a, there's a, there's a lot of technical science that goes into it.
When this is built, it goes into the ground, what, about twenty feet maybe? How, how deep, do you have any idea?
I do, um, typically, so we'll do a geotech, we'll do a soil sample.
Okay.
And, um, it's typically twenty feet, it can be, it can be deeper depending on the soil. But you have to take into consideration that, you know, we will be complying with national code. So we're in Arizona, so we're not going to get major ice buildup. But if, but this site will be designed as if it could be in Minnesota, for example, or Wisconsin. So you have to design a massive amount of loading because if, if that was a, in, in the Oregon State, you'd have massive i- ice buildup and weight on that tower. Obviously, we're not going to have that here. So you have that extra buffer in terms of structural capacity, but they always tend nowadays over-design them anyhow because you, you never know, um, over the lease term, technology changes. You know, radios get heavier and antennas get larger. So this site is going to be really over-designed to begin with so that if there is the need, you know, if there's other carriers that do want to co-locate that, that the structural capacity is there in addition to that safety buffer, if you like, because we're in Arizona and not in, in Oregon State. So, um, really overbuilds, to be honest.
Okay, so this will send a signal out to how far? About a mile, little over a mile, two miles maybe?
It will depend. So with the antennas, you have three sectors of antenna over three sixty degrees.
Okay.
So depending on, on the need, they will, the azimuths will be orientated. So I would imagine we'll have one due west to that larger residential area and the south and then the intersection is going to be busy. So it'll depend on capacity as well as, it's not just nowadays about covering a certain area. It's about covering that area that meets the, the actual, uh, demand in terms of data. So for example, a busy intersection at a certain time of day, you don't have a lot of carriers. You're going to have a lot of people using bangwood or, you know, with this neighborhood to the west, there's going to be a lot of demand coming from there. So there's a science to it. The engineers will, will, will evaluate what, what the need is and, and adjust the azimuths to whatever they're trying to, uh, cover as far as customer experience in terms of, um, the quality of the data, the, the demand, et cetera. There's, there's a lot that goes into it. Um, but anyhow, it's...
So what happens when, I know you said it's a twenty-year lease, right?
Correct.
Um, let's suppose ten years down the road, this is rendered obsolete because they're using more streetlight nodes or whatever, you know? I know that's something they're talking about. How usable would this land be after that? I mean, I, Litchfield Park, several years ago, we had a substation here. And because of the way, well, the way substations run, I guess oil seeps into the ground and it had to sit, they had to knock it down and it had to soak just as vacant, empty piece of land for several years. If this is obsolete, is it still going to be there fifty years from now? Is there any way it's going to go away? Would you have, um, would you be required to remove it? And if so, could that land be used for something else? Or would there also be like a dormant time period? Is there something that seeps into the ground or, I'm not worried about radiation stuff. I actually talked to, um, a guy with PhD in physics to try to get more information about all of this and it sounds like microwaves are a little bit more dangerous than the five G tower. But, but I'm concerned about what's going to happen after the fact that years down the road when, like I said, because I'm sure that twenty years from now, we're probably not going to have these types of towers in communities. What is going to happen?
Um, you know, I, I, I don't see that there would be an environmental impact to the ground per se and it's a small footprint. Typically in the lease, there is a, there is a section that will deal with if the tower goes away. Because if it's not generating revenue, they're not going to pay on that. So typically the tower company is responsible for removing the tower. Alternatively, in most ordinances, they will have language in the, in the ordinance that pertains to most, um, Phoenix, for example, has language in the ordinance that if, if the tower is not in use for a six-month period, has to be removed. So, but going back to your question about nodes and maybe I think you might be referring to small cells, which are, you know, there, there's a massive effort right now building on small cells everywhere. It, it's, I, I don't see macro sites going away. If you talk to any RF engineer, they'll say, we're still building macro sites. But there's going to be, um, a requirement for both macro and five G or, or sorry, and, and small cells because of the, the, the lower frequency. With five G typically doesn't travel as far, but also the demand is only going one way. If you ask, if you look at any of the...
It's crazy.
Yeah, the demand for data. And now, if you, if you factor in autonomous vehicles and other types of technology, the appetite for data is just, it's only going one way, so. But, you know, to answer your question about the environmental impact, I don't see that otherwise. Uh, or alternatively in the lease as well, typically, when you remove a tower, you have to take the foundation a couple of feet below grade. That's usually boilerplate language.
Okay.
Because most landlords, you know, would go and typically would want some type of protection.
Okay. Well, if you're going twenty feet down and then you're covering for two feet, you've got about eighteen feet there.
Yeah.
A big massive piece of metal in the ground. Okay.
But as you can appreciate, it's, it's a lot easier of a process to, to draw a hole and pour it as a coming back half. In fact, to pull that case out of the ground.
I know.
So the most property owners, you know, they're probably okay with just taking it a few feet below grade and, and, you know, but, yeah, I, I mean, like I said, I've been doing this for over twenty years and I've never seen a site come down ever in my time.
Okay.
And it's just, that's, the demand is, is never waned, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Just wanted to clarify, when you talk about a busy intersection, are you talking about Camelback and Dyserd or Camelback and Litchfield Road? And you talk about large density of development, is that Litchfield Park proper or is it extend to Litchfield Greens? What's the, the span of your service from this tower?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I, I, I honestly don't know what the, what the physical distance will be. But when I talk about density, I'm talking about intersections at a certain time of the day are going to be using a lot of data because people are going to be using their phones. And if it's rush hour, um, it's going to impact the use of the site. Now, from an RF engineer's standpoint, he doesn't really know where the site is located. If there's, if there's an engineer optimizing this site to operate at its best, he's not looking at a municipal boundary. He's looking at a site that he knows where the traffic is and he's going to optimize it to, to serve that particular area. So, so, um, it, it, I, I, I would say maybe not much beyond a half mile, probably. It depends on, on, on the usage and the band, but there's a lot of houses immediately to the west and there's a lot of houses immediately to the south. And I would imagine that's, that's going to be a priority as far as, um, because, you know, this is for T-Mobile and like I mentioned, they're pushing the set-top box now, which there's, there's a, I would imagine there's going to be a lot of interest in that for the, just the simple fact that you can get unlimited data for something around fifty dollars there, thereabouts. That's incredible value given the speeds that now you can, you know, actually, um, achieve with, with this technology, so.
No, I'm for it. I'm a T-Mobile customer, I have drop calls all the time and I would like it to serve Litchfield Park.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Sorry, just by the way, I, I, and I apologize. We do have a photo simulation, which I can get to Daniel. Um, and it's my fault, I should have gotten it to you by now. But, um, I will, I can get that to Daniel, um, you know, tomorrow and hopefully he can maybe distribute that to you just to have a look. But we, um, we are open to, uh, to any style of branch or any type of, you know, we're, we'd be happy to do a mon- we've, we've done, I've done sites with Maricopa Water District in Surprise. And we're happy to do a monopole as well, if that's the preference of the board, believe it or not, so, um, either way.
I went over to the site before the meeting, that's right, and I hit every red light on the way back, which is why I was late. But I wanted to see the surround around the Burger King trash and, you know, to get an idea of, that's six feet tall and then yours is going to be ten feet tall. But just to get an idea of the lay of the land is something I hadn't really paid attention to until this issue came up, so, anyway, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the public comments. Do we have any public to comment?
The Chair's staff does not see any.
No comments, all right. We'll move on to the next. This is, uh, possible action to recommend approval to the city council. I'll open this up for a motion or discussion. I'll start it off, I'll move that we approve or, I move that we recommend approval.
I see the Chair, we have to close the public hearing portion.
I, you're correct, right. We'll officially close the public hearing and then move on to the next item, which is possible recommendation to the city council to approve the use permit. Is that all, open that up with a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, seeing none, unanimously is recommended for approval to city council. There's no need for an executive session. Uh, is there a staff report on current events? No reports. Is there a commissioner's report on current events? Seeing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Move adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, aye. It's unanimous. Meeting's adjourned.
Good job.